See if I have a password.
It didn't do that first.
In the cartoon, the Disney cartoon, there was the one owl. What was his name?
One owl?
Yeah, there was a cartoon that had an owl in it.
There's your video.
Merlin's owl, what do you call it?
Okay, do we have anything to say about?
Do we have found out?
Thank you. We gotta thank you.
Good job. Thank you.
Any corrections or comments about the meeting minutes? Hang on, minutes are approved, yes.
Red, red.
Supervisor report.
Great.
Oh, just the only thing that I can report on, which did have a early childhood, I guess, meeting last week. And just so you know, I guess from a financial position standpoint is the twenty eight E between the city county and school is we have the largest fund balance that we probably had at May thirtieth than we've had in the last ten years. So raising our rent as I think has contributed to that certainly. They did hire a couple more people and so they've had some kids on the waiting list that, you know, with early childhood, you're kind of tied to the number instructors that you have based that tells you how many kids you can educate. And with them hiring a couple more people, they'll be able to increase the number of students. So that bodes well from a financial standpoint also. So once again, our meetings are quick, fast.
Probably longer than your meeting.
You know, I've told Jody Flaherty is our secretary and I said, reading through her minutes, I said, it actually takes me longer to read her minutes than it does to do the meeting. And I don't know how she does that.
Paying off the bonds probably helped with that bank balance also, don't you know, because we used to have that payment.
When we had all the air conditioners and the carpet.
Oh, they bonded for that?
Windows. We did all kinds of crap.
We put it, we put in carpet, we've done right, like right for tiny.
So when we did pay for that, we borrowed for that.
We did, yes.
Okay. Okay, yes, that would have helped also. That would have saved from the.
Refrigerator, gosh damn.
That's all I got.
Okay, I'll mention real quick after our meeting today, Craig and I are gonna sit down with Ben. Paul's retiring. Contract with him. We've got Paul's.
Our certified engineer.
Yes, we have Paul's contract and I'll look over and mirror and discuss that and then next week we'll put that on the agenda, then discuss and take action.
Very good.
In June.
I've got good news. They're moving three of our programs over to the new building this week. Hopefully they'll be calling it home tomorrow to the rain side of the thing, but that is ready to go. And then very shortly after they get those situated, the others will need to move in. We'd had the folks that were looking at the old building, look at it a second time. And I talked to Jim Brown last week and he said they're very interested. And I said, well, or yes, and offer or something. So that's timing of that is excellent.
We have a listing price on that for that?
I think that, boy, it's been so long ago. It seems like one ninety five.
Something like that.
That was what the market analysis came up and I had, it's an open listing, so all the Rockford County real estate agents would have access to selling it as a public listing. So that was good news that we've had some interest in. Actually, we've had two different people look at it two times. And the one that from the company from Storm Lake, I understand, had brought their architects down and I don't know where they're at with all that either. So because the building right now is kind of chopped up into small little areas and but it has a lot of positive things with the elevator and a walkout basement. They say you don't find in a lot of downtown business places. So but two people kind of interested in will be out of it there soon. So really things did just kind of ball together. And then the D H S has their badges. They can now come and go from the office. We had, I think, the first time.
Door working?
The upstairs door is working. The upstairs door is working and the downstairs door, the equipment, whatever was wrong with that, or he said should be here to go there tomorrow. He had things overnighted and then they were actually wrong parts. And so we've had a little drama with that door, getting it all worked up. But they have ten badges and each girl has a badge so we'll know who's coming in and when it's going and the cameras are working. At least loves her space down there. So things are really coming together finally. So that is good news. I think the job core closing has been the top of a lot of people's minds, what impact that's going to have on Rockford County with a hundred and twenty one or a hundred and twenty four people losing their jobs. I truly believe the biggest impact, and I get teary eyed when I think about it. These kids who have worked so hard, they have kids that are, you know, possibly two weeks from getting their G P Ds, they've sent home to environments that are, there's a reason they're at job corps. And what I need somebody.
So they shut it off before they finish their year.
Yeah. Now the girls, the people that are in the C N A programs will be able to complete theirs online. But the concern is they're going to places that they maybe don't have internet. Maybe they don't have a mother that's going to remind them. You have homework to do. You have to get this done. So there's a lot of sadness going on. And I, you know, people will find jobs, you know, there is somehow, you know, unfortunately, people may have to move out of our community. I don't think we can slide them all in.
June, how many, how many students are in the, you know?
You know.
And of those students, I guess, maybe Paul would be, how many stayed in?
How many close proximity? Okay, they can hold two hundred and eighty students. There's two hundred and eighty beds. I believe at this time they have about two hundred and four. When they announced last Thursday that the center was going to be closing down, there were kids that said, I'm not going to be able to finish anyway. This and they feel betrayed. A lot of these kids have trust issues. And so people that they really trusted have disappointed them. And so you just, if you just can imagine that they finally, you know, were learning trades, tile trades, carpentry. They're seeing culinary, these kids are going back to environments that aren't going to make them more successful in life. I talked to Steve, the numbers that the federal government are using is national. There's, you know, I don't, I ran all these numbers down. I probably should have, but they're.
It didn't sound like each one of them got evaluated on its own.
No, they did not. And that's kind of the problem. It's group punishment. You know, there's some sort of, even the folks that are very close to job corps say that there are centers that aren't running efficiently, that aren't, you know, doing everything the right way. But it's group punishment now. Everybody, job corps has been in our community, I think, almost sixty years.
Sounds like this is a hatchet approach or a scalpel approach.
What the discussion yesterday was is that, you know, Bush had looked at, you know, trying to do something, you know, four different presidents have spent on the chopping block because they can just see. But what I told Steve this morning, and he's diligently working, he's talked to Grassley, he's threatened the governor, you know, trying to is it's on a pause, it's on a suspension, you know, they're trying to figure out how to run it more efficiently. And so that may take some time. But the problem is, is that this group of kids that got sent home are coming back. This group of great employees that have dedicated a lot of their life to this program. They find other jobs, probably like aren't coming back. So there, it's just, it just doesn't make sense to me.
Did they say what they thought our job corps was, where their inefficiencies were?
No, they did not get specific, but the numbers that were given to us by the center director yesterday. Steve said after we talked to Grassley, they're looking at completely different numbers for what it costs per student to get them through the program. And so just trying to nail that down to where the discrepancy is between. But what Steve and I talked about is possibly the center out here is the old college and so it needs repair. There's things that, you know, that they've had to do and they just got done making a lovely gymnasium. I do believe it's two hundred some thousand dollars that they spent for the new flooring. And because they, they have a basketball team that went to Chicago to play other teams and that's just such a team building and such a that, that number possibly went into what it costs to get, you know, so when you have repairs on the building and you take what the program actually costs, you know, the number that they gave was thirty five thousand per student to get them through the program and out the door. It costs sixty thousand for to keep somebody in jail. So if you can teach somebody a skill and so those were the kind of the numbers that the federal government's looking at. Numbers much higher or all hundred fifty five thousand is the average that they say it costs to get a student through the job or system. And the number.
For how many years?
Each program's a little bit different.
Two or three.
Two or three. It depends on what.
Which one they're getting after D A.
Not all programs are exactly the same, but they're successful. The number that they looked at from the federal government side is that once they get out the average of what those kids are making is sixteen thousand a year. And so those numbers, you know, whether the numbers are right or wrong, I think.
It's extremely low for somebody who's an electrician or a.
Tile layer, carter, a nurse. So but what, what makes the numbers go way down is if somebody gets out of the program and goes back. And I use Chicago all the time because that seems like a place.
Average numbers like people would actually go back.
Yeah, go back home and you move back in with mom or whoever and you can't find that job and you don't, you don't even have a job. So that's zero weighs heavy, you know, on the ones that do, you know, so they're all.
How many, how many of the kids that come out here? I mean, typically where are they?
Oh, Waterloo, to be something from Omaha.
Most of the Iowa kids.
Yeah, mostly, you know, Chicago, we're in the Chicago region, I understand. I had a quick study yesterday because I, you know, like I said, my daughter shot me one of my ears, but you know, loved it. It's really sad.
Well, my daughter, she was in the book, keeping the counting out there, whatever you want to call it, hers. She's going to be one of the last ones to let go to clean up books.
Sure.
But she, she's just gonna go back to.
Or.
Go back to stay at home, be stay at home mom, actually do it, finish all through school, finish accounting degree.
Yeah, we're, so they, so they did say that they're going to, you know, reduce staff gradually. If they're, well, my daughter's done early because she's in the recruitment and then the, they come to her and decide which one of the programs fit her best. Well, they shut down taking students in, so you don't really need to have that onboarding. Don't need to have teachers if not have classes. So they're going, you don't need to have cooks if nobody's eating. But you do need some security to make sure that people aren't jumping the fence and further windows. I don't know, they'll need, you know, R A's until all of the kids are gone, things like that.
Sure, we're a hundred percent financed by federal government.
It's contracted. They tried to get that out. If you've worked there, you've had to reapply for your position of a new.
Absolutely. Lost your retirement, you lost your seniority, you know.
Started all over.
They interview you for a job and sometimes you, somebody gets the job you had to get a different job and was not, and that in a way is maybe the disconnect that there is, you know, there's I think nine centers that are actually ran by the Department of Labor. And those are doing well, you know, so you've got this middle person in there who might run those what else? And then they get a job for in there. How do they know how to run it for sure, you know? And every time you change somebody, then there's this learning curve and.
Wonder why it got to that point where they run nine of them, but not all of them.
I don't know.
You know, I, I'll interject something. Right now, the, the Trump thing is that cutting out in some of these different agencies, the middle, you've heard that on the news yet. Cutting out the middlemen because that's who's scooping up a large chunk of the money. So you got to ask yourself how much the administrative state is for these contractors that are making their bid. And then making you do more with less down here and they're just.
Right, right. And that, that conversations.
How much of that's gone?
Yeah, you don't know.
And then you don't know what, what, you know, you just don't know.
You just don't know. It's, but for me, it's the end of an era. It's saying, and it, it should concern us. A hundred and twenty one, a hundred and twenty four individuals in the Rockford County who will no longer have jobs and that, and it's been careers for a lot of people. There's, my sister-in-law worked out there for forty seven years. Just love the kids, love the work. Angela wasn't planning on going anyplace because she absolutely felt fulfilled by her job. So that being said, what we have to move forward on then is what's going to happen to the building, you know, what the ghost town on the hill, you know, it just seems such a waste and such a shame, but I don't know.
But if it's, if we're just kind of in a hole, what's the chance it's coming back?
I, I want to be positive, you know, I want to.
And there's a fifty percent or is it thirty percent or is it eighty percent?
I don't know how they're going to evaluate. I don't know who's going to evaluate. I don't know, you know, probably for a dollar, Craig, you could own it.
Well, it's one of those things too, you hope that something goes back in it sooner than later because we all know you let it sit empty. How much faster maybe it's your.
We have this state of the art kitchen out there, you know, they have fantastic to base.
Yeah.
Dorm rooms, computers, two hundred and eighty beds, you know, that's how many beds are actually out there during the fall. All just going to be set there like a ghost now. Very soon.
It's too bad Whit couldn't expand their campus more and actually have dorms up there.
But what needs to happen is somebody needs to get the conversations going. And so Steve and I talked about it again this morning, going to be in close contact with Grassley and Stroud.
Well, that's the sad part is there, now they've already started the career academy out there by their campus. I mean, you already had facilities up there, right? And they have welded shop and everything up there.
That job corps used wit. I mean, they were interactive together to get those kids the best skills they could.
Well, one more time, it was a college and when the college closed, we all.
Midwest College.
Midwest College, so it was doom and gloom when the college took.
And it was empty for a long time, a long time, from Midwest to Job Corps. If I understand it right, was one I remember for sure is Dick Knowles and a few others that actually. There you go. It was Washington to get job.
That's right. That's, and you know, there are people that say where, who is that person that's going to jump on a plane and go out there and sit outside of somebody's door until they get some answers and we just need to figure out how as a community, we don't let it just be forgotten. And so keeping talking about it, and Steve has been awesome through all of this. He came to the meeting yesterday. We had some students get up and talk about their experiences. I can't lie, it was. Well, yeah, to say the least, there was a box of Kleenex that's being handed around to everyone because these kids, it meant so much to them. Where they came from and where they, just to be sent home to a, a environment.
Who knows what? We don't know. Who knows what?
And some may not have a home.
That's, there are two. Here's the good news. Stepping Stone does have room for two of the students that make it into the criteria for stepping stones. And that's why Wesco was out there involved in it to see if they could help with some of the.
I wonder what he's got his mind cooking on.
Yeah, no kidding. He's thinking.
Clay's an innovator.
Clay and Brittany were out there. And I, I'm sure that the wheels are turning on how, you know, because this is still part of even mental health that's going on with these children. Who, you know, having had my daughter work out there all those years, she's seen cases of kids that came and can't believe what they've been through. And they had hope and.
Lots of early childhood trauma.
Lots. And the fact that they would, would want to come.
Both your substance abusers or even your early criminals have early childhood trauma is what usually leads to that.
And one of the misconceptions and one of the reasons that we all got together yesterday was to talk about the misconception that's been on media that these are drug addicted kids and that these kids are criminals. And they can't get into job corps if they, I think you have a speeding ticket. It's not like that.
And it's a no tolerance place.
They're booted if you.
If you even come back from your weekend with your parents, you smell like alcohol, you can't come in. And if you, as a teenager, get into an argument with another student and you kick them in the chins, you have to go in front of a console and they have to decide if you, you know, have a behavior that they, or if you're sorry and, you know, there's three levels of discipline and there are, there are certain things that happen that even the director can't done these different things. So it's not like a bunch of, these kids really just being a hand up. They need some help. And what hurts the most is that the group of kids that are there now, you know.
That was when Angela's job was to evaluate the end comer.
Right. One of them, whatever many. They, they, they've, they've won the trust of these kids and they're working so hard and they're just being sent. And it's just, it's just unfathomable that you couldn't have given some time to maybe speed up some of these things so they could walk out of there with their G P D. So they could walk out of there with their diplomas. It's just, right, so I.
And they also have a wing or I thought they took on young mothers.
Yes.
Single parents.
Single parents.
Mothers and fathers.
Absolute mothers and fathers. That's actually more interesting.
They have a daycare.
Startings to have a.
The new management, they don't have the daycare portion of it anymore. And so that, that's kind of evolved and changed a little bit. Has, has a lot of programs, but it's a sad day in our community to know that that is it's the third time in the, since Steve pulled, it's been that, that there's been a threat in a, you know, warning that they might have closed it. So we all had that great page. They would realize that this program is valuable and or it is suspended.
So maybe you get some community leader. I mean.
Yeah.
Whoever, where, where I was cut Department of Labor, maybe you get community leaders. Y'all get on an airplane, go out there with your paperwork in hand and people like your daughter be able to say what they've been doing. And put that on, you know, this is Denison. We don't know about all the other jobs. What we did in Dennis.
And that's exactly.
This was our cost. This was our, our, you know, our ROI, you know.
I very rarely brag about my kids, you guys know that, but they would send her, she's been to Florida to, to do training with other job corps to, to kind of give the help they do. Where else should they've been sending her around a little bit because we feel that we're very successful. The numbers in D C, you know, show a higher percentage of, you know, things that I don't know where they got the numbers. And that's something that Steve just gave to me this morning that he got from Grassley's office because job corps right now can't look at anything, access denied. They can't look at their own numbers. They can't see any of the things that they used to be able to see. Access denied. So they couldn't read us what they used to be able to see. I said, did anybody print it?
I know.
They can't get into any other information.
They can't access tonight.
Nice.
It, yeah, yeah.
Tragic.
I, that's, you know, when I went up there to deal with issues, you know, you go up there with your, with, with everything lined out, you know, you gotta have your, all your cost analysis and all that. But then the big thing that impressed people in Washington is when you can put the, the real faces in front of them and put the stories in front of them. You know, talk about what's going to bring some of the students, but bring the instructors and bring, bring some of the admin. And that to me is what you're gonna have to do if you want the rest.
I suppose what, what this whole thing's going to come down to is we need to get that going. We can't sit here and do nothing. So I hear, well, Todd, it sounds like you volunteered. Let's get you on a plane.
It will help. I will help try to organize an idea, but I am.
I think that many meetings maybe need to happen. I, I think just to sit and, and turn our, turn a blind eye is the exact opposite of what this community needs to do. We have an asset out there. We have a proven formula. And I just think that we can't just not do.
I think they need, you know, if they can't get in the system, I mean, the bad part is you're not going to be able to show what you were versus another. You know, your cost benefit.
Well, it, it'd become an ordinary in an organization, like most of the time if you, they decide you're, you're no longer going to work here, they just walk you out just so that you can't sabotage and you can't. You know, so it's not that unusual that, you know, they would lose access to confidential things that you're, because you have disgruntled employees that could possibly do something. It's so, it's an abundance of caution. It's so, it's, it's an abundance of caution, only some people can, and it's part of that phased out, you know, just making sure. Um, uh, cause these, and so, yeah, as of June thirtieth, I do believe it will be a ghost town with much of.
On to your point, Craig, we don't know, we don't know, maybe something else come in or keep eyes open, maybe a wit type, you know, who knows?
Beautiful Vista?
But somebody needs to go to somebody and say, hey, we've got this beautiful setting. And it, it is beautiful there, it's just, uh, we have, and I don't.
Just kind of disappoints you, I guess, from, uh, we all want the government to be more efficient.
Right.
We all see that there's waste in the federal state and even in the local government, that there's things we can do better. But when you see something that affects, we know that the program does good things. We just know that it costs too much, you know, kinda like on a local level, when we see public health offers great services to a public. We look at it and say, geez, it just, it costs more money than what we think it should be, how can we be more efficient in bringing that service to the public? And instead of just, okay, from now on, we're just not having public health, we're just gonna get rid of it, we're not gonna have it because we can't do it efficiently, no. We need to find a way to do it efficiently, so if the government sees that, hey, you can't deny that Job Corps does good for the people that are in it.
They don't deny it.
Certainly have proof in our local center that kids that have graduated from here, we have tremendous success stories.
Do.
And, uh.
We do.
So we know that it works, but if they say it's costing so much money, okay, then fix that, let's find a way to make it more efficient.
Thirty-five versus sixty thousand.
You know, that's the.
That's a point.
You think you can do that while it's open, while we're still treating the kids, we can find ways to do it more efficiently, you would think. Cause if we're gonna put a pause and come back with something that they would say is better or different, why can't we do that while we're educating the kids, while we're going through the program, we should be able to do both at the same time.
We should have, but I think that because.
Well, we can.
It's, I, I.
But if some of them are such a, and you know, that's why I said sometime when you got alternative managers and you got that middle man.
That's exactly the problem that if you talk to the people on the street, they would say, why do we have to have, how much is that group getting to just get the money to this group? Why doesn't it just go from this group to this group and the middle person?
Yeah, that's part of the problem.
And we're not sure if that, if, let's just say that the company that can.
Trying to remember what I heard on the.
Well, they, they actually had the, the, the company that, that got the contract, some, they weren't doing something right. So they awarded the contract to somebody else in the middle of that person's contract. And now the contract has changed to where, you know, they gave them a million dollars to run it. If you, if you can run it more efficiently, you get to keep that many, you know, part of that million dollars. And now you have to send and say what you need the money for and it's on a base of pay basis of only, you know, so they've changed it already to where, all right, you showed us many, many teachers, how much you need this month to keep it going. So they have to start, um, and there were, there was talk that they might not even get like their, uh, retirement, their money paid out because that's, and there's lawyers working on different departments and things.
You know, to your point, or the middlemen, we see it all the time in the state of Iowa, our M C Os, managed care organizations, they're the middleman to administer, take a chunk out, authenticity, they're the ones running the voucher program. Middle company, just administer it, you look at mental health, they have primary, Iowa Primary Care, that is now the A S O. They're just the middleman, it's like, hey.
How much are you paying for that? I don't know, I can't, I'm sitting here trying to scan my mind, but I can't remember. I heard one thing that they were talking about and I, I don't know if it was a Doge thing or if one of the organization or one of the, one of the departments up there that actually found one where, uh, the administrative was actually taking like eighty percent. I think it was the Doge people, they were taking eighty percent of what came from the government before it got to the people. Eighty percent to administer.
Maybe all the middlemen in Iowa need to be like that.
Well, and.
You know, anybody works for Doge? We have a whole. Staff that's looking at that.
Be thirty-seven and a half hour reporting, I don't like signing that without getting like.
I mean, cause it, it's a perplexing issue from the government standpoint is that do we wanna keep all these, instead, instead of having a middleman, we still need people to administer it, so now they're all government employed.
Yeah.
So now we've got I P R S and we've got all these other, you know, things that we have to pay out, health insurance.
Yeah.
And so.
Why they privatize, that's for sure.
So is it better to privatize, bid it out with a private company for that? And I think, right, but if those guys, oh, these start getting so high, it's like maybe we have to look back and do it in ourselves again.
Well, then you got the, I think as the years go by, the efficiency starts to dwindle and they just keep asking for more, we gotta have more and it's like.
Well, that's where I feel like the M C Os, that's what they do, they have their profit margins, they, they wanna meet. And if they don't get it, we've already had a couple of them pack up and go home.
Yeah. Yeah.
Good thing we got some.
But it all kind of goes back to, you know, employees, you have good employees, you wanna pay them well, so you can keep them. Benefits are so important to, you know, so you just kind of have to keep a brace in the bar and eventually, you know, the cost of everything goes up.
And the old adage, you mean, that there, there's lies, there's damn lies and there's statistics. And so you can make numbers a lot of times say whatever you want them to say, if you wanna have a program look bad, I can take numbers and make it look better.
Yes, yes.
And so that's the other frustrating part is sometimes the information you're fed, based on what they're making the decision on, is not accurate information. Or you're just pulling things that make you make your argument.
Absolutely.
And so you, then you're not getting a truthful picture and it's just.
No, and but if you wanna add every little thing in, you know, what, what Steve and I think maybe happened at Dennison is the repairs for those buildings go into the cost rather than just the actual programs, the shelves and so. This level that we're at, you know, the remodels and the H VAC systems and, you know, so that raise that number way up for each student.
You think every.
We don't know.
Every facility is gonna have.
Absolutely, absolutely, unless you have, ours is old though.
It is. And. I'm not sure when the Western College was built.
Well, if Job Corps has been out there for sixty years.
Sixty.
They say.
But you know, those repairs, I would think compared to building a whole brand new facility would be, just like a yes center, you know, using an older facility but maintaining it, it's far cheaper than. Still haven't built anyone.
I don't know, but that, uh, that, that took up, um, great portion of the thing yesterday, just trying to, uh. Right, well, we didn't find out until that afternoon and when I, they said Steve was coming and then they didn't want me to press there and originally it was just gonna be a few people and then it just kind of, um, so I thought, I didn't call Craig real quick to see if he could come, but, uh, it's in the meeting, so I didn't know I was going either. Was, landed, says, sure, I'll come. I don't know, I, I, I think maybe we should have it on our agenda every day or every week to try to figure out what we're gonna do and get somebody together. Uh, but, but it's so wrong, so new right now that, uh, but Steve's talking to like people that wouldn't should know and gonna stay in front of them, how's that? All right, Craig, your turn. Sign mark folks.
Oh, you know, mine was real quiet last week, uh, I actually had. Only thing I had was a ribbon cutting for the hydration station. Uh, them were pretty interesting drinks. But, uh, that was good, uh. I got a lot of other little things, barfay and stuff like that too, so I mean, that, that was all I really had last week. There was a oil spill and it's been all over on social media and probably on the radio. Um, wheels and deals and oil leak, what, about it too, what caused, I don't know any of it. But I actually looked at storm drain and Zach and then we're out monitoring, monitoring it in the river with one of the drones, watching to see where the spill was moving. And they got the, uh, the big tubes that they put out around the oil spill, I can't think of the name of it right off the top of my head. But it, they absorb the oil. Hazmat team that we got our tri county hazmat team all, all extracted from the river at some point.
So they didn't get it contained.
They did get it contained, yeah, it's contained, so, but the drone lost its mind and just took off. Zach said, I don't know what the hell happened, he said he kind of did it one other time, but usually when it's kind of loses signal, it's sketchy or something, you hit that return home button and it'll come home or where it took off.
You can go to Russia and hit a fighter.
That's where it was going, but it didn't make it. Around about, no, but it hit us, it landed on a street and kind of banged it up a little bit, but, uh, he's gonna get ahold of the company and try to check out some warranty, what the hell is going on, cause our other ones exactly like. Well, I said, well, be careful.
It could have, it's, it could have worse, could have, like, hit a person.
It could have hit something, you know, could have hit something that caused an issue, yeah, yeah. So, I mean, yeah, that was, uh, a little spooky, but we survived that, they found it this morning. Couldn't find it last night, but they did find it this morning. Uh, other than that, I didn't have any call, I mean, I called you guys about a couple of things about, but, you know, financing stuff with the engineering department. All that seems to be in order, so we're good.
Good, like, it's good. I did, I'll bring it up quick, I did talk to Paul yesterday, he is working on the dog owners, now I'm getting some pipe to him, touches him, uh, uh, here this week, so he said that next week he would put it on the agenda, all right, take it over, right, then I came up with it. Putting it all together, what you said to me, dig into it, very fun. Well, let's take a five minute break till Paul gets here. They come around as well fast. Oh, he's gonna be here in three minutes, um.
I did it one and a half yesterday, last week, so.
I'm a trucker, I unload, I unload the, I unload the bladder before I come in and I'm good.
I'm usually good.
I, uh, two weeks ago, I, I got, I've been hauling my dog around before.
Oh, really?
So I stop a little more frequently, which the wife, I, I, I think that was her intention, cause she knows that I'll get out there. First times I'll sit in that seat for eight hours, you know, just, everything's going good, you just keep going, you know? And, uh, but eight, at eight hours, my E L D says, you gotta take a three minute break, take my thirty minute break, but, uh.
Are you all computerized for your logbooks and stuff?
Yeah, for, just for my, the livestock don't need to be, but I'm out pulling the reefer, Zach's out with the reefer, you gotta switch over to E L D. But, uh, the, uh, the dogs making me stop a little more frequently, you know, and she'll start bouncing around and she's got that, or she's, uh, I gotta pee, so then I get out and let her out, but that gets me up walking around too. She's worried about, you know, you hear about especially when guys get older, the drivers having blood clots in their legs and stuff, and you know, I don't, I, I just feel anything, so you just keep going, comfortable, just go. If I get, start to get bothered, get sweaty, my back gets sweaty, then I might get up.
It's very good to get out, it's a little bit.
Yeah, it's just, you know.
Everybody has those nice big truck stops, you go in and shop a little, like.
They don't have shoes in trucks.
They all.
They, they do have chrome at some.
They don't need to shop anymore, yes, no. Oh, what fun it's that one, it's only basically really.
I, uh, I was, I actually drove by the one down there Rockport the other day, I thought about stopping, you know, usually I might go by that one, it's like.
Where's the biggest one in the United States of America?
Okay. Well, God is, there's a couple of chrome shops that'll rival it as far as what they have, but I still don't know if they'd rival it, rival it with size. You know, Wildwood, you're not right now, Wildwood, Florida's got a great big truck stop there, they used to unload hay there. We'd take hay down for, uh, Gary Rager down into Florida, we unloaded, the guy made us serve that Wildwood truck stop.
The hay on Florida?
Yeah, we, we, Gary'd have hay, we, he'd, he'd load it. And, uh, we'd take the trailers up there and he'd load the hay on, we'd go up, get the trailer and then go to Florida and then bring calves back to it. Florida down there, we load down there.
There's a lot of cattle down in Florida.
Oh, tons, they just live back by the alligator. You just don't see them, but yeah, there's a lot of cattle, or you just don't think about it, cause you don't see them, but they're.
You know what state?
Paul, you always go right on time always.
Was it nine point five?
Ohio.
Why you get the most?
Like two of them.
Head count or.
I believe if it's, I'm trying to think if it's total number, if it's just cow cat pairs. Uh, what that is, but I was shocked.
There's a lot of cattle come out, I used to, I've actually loaded them out of there, they come over on containers. And you load them down to port, bring them, like, somewhere back in Arizona, I don't know, they had loaded the cattle off of carrots. They, they, they feed them in the feed yard, the trimmings off the carrots, and they turn the inside of your trailer on. And it stayed in.
You have a problem with the color orange?
Oh, I don't, I really don't want it in my trailer.
Oh, good morning, Paul.
Good morning. There's any truckers out there listening, they go, yeah, she's talking. Well, good morning.
Good morning.
We'll have a lot here this morning, uh, the, uh, Western Howard Power, he's got a little war there, they're doing the service. Um, there's a replacement over at Vale, they're, uh, working on that North Bridge Pier. They're gonna do everything on that north side, then south side, I understand it. So, and then the Seacoal project is just, uh, still scheduled for July, so great crew, uh, finishing up, uh, some work over there on J Avenue. And then they're gonna head down to W Avenue and, uh, gonna work on that great rain, and it's beautiful rain. And, you know, we're grading today, but we could show you that rain, uh, bridge crew.
Talking about W Avenue, you know that, that W Avenue, um, where that dirt road by V is where they have that little, um, what do you call?
Oh, yeah, it's a little.
I think that tube's blocked.
Okay. That, that could be, I haven't looked at that.
Yeah, it was overflowing and it was before the rain.
Going over the road?
Yeah.
Yeah, the tubes are flooded, yeah, yeah.
Just that.
Nice little option there for, for a crossing, but every once in a while it does happen, so. Um, bridge crew up on A Avenue, uh, working on the coal replacement there, they got the pipe in. And, uh, so we'll be backfilling once it, roadside crew, uh, basically doing a little bit of everything right now, they're probably about done seeding. And the mowing is just, you know, the holidays, I think the pavement's looking really nice.
Really nice, and what a great time to have things seeded and now some rain.
Uh-huh, yeah, yeah, this would be perfect. Uh, and then, uh, items four there, or five, six are, uh, things that we had talked about and I sent everybody a, uh, copy of everything that's being approved here today, that we, you know, last week. So, if you have any questions, I do have copies of, you know, of the, the pay rates, um, for you if you want, uh, uh, the position descriptions again, um, you know, this is, is, uh, basically creating two assistant engineer positions, one's for administrative operations, the other one's for field operations. So, uh, Kathy would be the administrative operations, Ben, their temp's gonna be the field operations, provide support to Ben. Who, you know, I believe you're planning on meeting with him to discuss his appointment as county engineer now that he's passed and gotten his license. And then, and then the other one is, uh, recognizing the crane operator certificate, the certification that's required. And, uh, and giving, uh, us basically a stipend, uh, for, for having that. So it's really important to our bridge crew operation.
And this was, I had asked about it a little bit, this is part of our discussions earlier when we are restructuring, uh, secondary roads.
Cause we, we no longer will have an assistant bridge crew for it, okay, so that position is, is gone, but you know, this is recognizing not only the need to have that certification as crane operator and kind of finding a middle ground between having an assistant bridge crew for it, and, uh, so, uh, so that's kind of where we're headed on that.
Makes sense.
Okay, so those are the position descriptions, which would need to be approved, and then.
Mechanics is after one July.
Pardon?
The mechanic raising of the July ones.
Yeah, the, the one that. Yeah, the, the one that, what I put in there, that would all take effect, all of these take effect June twentieth, I mean, that's when the first. These wages, I believe, take, take effect, I believe on the twentieth, is that correct?
That's for administrative and all of them, all of this would be bargaining unit, everybody's.
Do mechanic wages too? Well, they would take place, I guess, I don't know if Amy uses the same wages until July first gets here. But.
No, I think we use that.
And I don't know if she splits the pay period up, I guess what I'm.
I didn't want to ask Amy, because she was asking us the same stuff before. Start through that.
Yeah, it's in the budget. Well, this would be effective, probably pay period.
Wouldn't get paid out till July anyway.
Paid till July, yeah.
Right, but doesn't affect current budget, it'll affect next year's budget.
Yeah, that's.
Appropriately budgeted for in the new raises.
So what was budgeted for in the new one? Yeah, and that's, you know, I, I've got the, the budget summary here to go over that with you as well, you know, if there's any questions, but. But usually that's, I mean, this is how it's always done, it affected June twentieth, but I don't know. That's the pay period started June twentieth. And I don't know when the actual wages, if they go into effect on July first, maybe not the hell. Or if they start June twentieth, then we have different wages for that pay period.
So. Are you talking about the July one increases when they?
Right.
So. So. I'm gonna say. Probably, um, wouldn't be until the eighteenth, that the July one raises would be on that check.
So when?
Will you start in June twentieth though, or will the old, the current rates be until June thirtieth? And then you put new rates in July one?
I cannot do separate.
Okay, that's what I thought, so the new raises will be June twentieth through the third.
Yeah, and that would be.
And not paid until the eighteenth.
Right.
Right, right.
That they go into effect on the twentieth.
Yes.
And that's like, yeah.
Yes, right, yeah.
But I think that's the way.
But I think, feel like we've done that for a while.
I mean, whatever.
So they don't get paid.
We bridge the gap with the new raises, yeah.
It's in that budget cycle, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, correct.
So. So then I, I also wanted to share, you know, kind of this, this was a sheet that. We went over back January. And so. The, the overall, you know. Key thing here is that for fiscal year twenty-five, which is the yellow, you know, it's just FY twenty-five, that was the budgeted numbers for this current fiscal year. That we're in, that's gonna end here in a couple of weeks. That two point six million for overall salaries. I put the same amount in for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, even though all these raises have taken effect because. You know, I won't be here and we've eliminated the bridge position. So, the, you do that administrative position, so, you know, I, I, I share with you, that's right, she kind of laid out all of that, so. You know, so that's, that's where there's, there's savings, I guess, in terms of.
Just part of the whole restructuring and moving people.
That's right, yeah, yeah, we're, we're in a mode of trying to get by with less people. So, but if you, if you want to, just take a moment here, we'll take a look at that fiscal year twenty twenty-five reestimate. Column, and, you know, I, I, as I look at the numbers, as we're nearing the end here. The revenues are gonna come in probably almost half what we budgeted, if not higher than what we budgeted. So that number will be increased by at least a couple hundred thousand dollars. On the reestimate, the expenses, I think are gonna be down probably. Two to three hundred thousand dollars. I mean, our fuel, we, the, the latest, we had six hundred fifty thousand budgeted for this year, we spent four hundred. You know, so if we spend another fifty thousand the next month or so. You know, that. We, 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 we'd still have two hundred thousand there that we didn't spend, so that's a good thing on that side. Yeah, I, I, I fully expect that number on the fiscal year twenty twenty-six column to be over one point five million dollars. You know, we, when we re-asked, when, when we see the final numbers for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Our, our balance is gonna be probably a half a million dollars higher. Just good. So, road use tax revenues continue to come in really strong, probably over five million dollars in total road use tax revenues, which is real good.
And is there a specific fund that your ending balance is in? Or is that just in the general fund?
It's in our fund, and so we don't, you know, there's a lot of governmental entities that get to the end of the year. And how budgeted numbers can they spend? They spend everything they can because they had a budget, they had that money given to them, you know, there's a spend. We don't do that. I mean, ours just rolls over into next year and just carry over.
You're your own fund, so.
You know. So, there's none of that's going on in our operation. And we just kind of. So, I don't know if there are any questions there on that, but you know, as they wrap up the year here, I think should. Budget wise, things should look really pretty decent.
Good.
So. So, oh, do you have that information, I think you gave it to us before about the salaries for Tim, Ben, Kathy, is that?
I, I have that spreadsheet.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't bring that up.
Right, me and David wanna grab that and come down.
Yep, that's no problem, I have that filed down there, so. Anyhow, I guess. So I would want to take action on these things.
Motion to approve item number four.
Go move.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion. Hearing that on paper, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. About item number five. Make a motion to approve item number five.
I move we approve for your twenty twenty-six wages for secondary road administrative assistance.
Motion by Craig, second by Kai, and further discussion. Hearing that on paper, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Make motion to keep for the wages in the secondary road.
Motion, second, for the discussion. On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Okay. And. This will be my last visit here. Uh, it's been a pleasure, it, it, it truly has been.
It truly has.
And, and I will miss it, I'll miss all of you folks and, thank you.
Well deserved.
I've been very fortunate, very blessed for all of these years to, you know, have been able to have a nice job that allows. Raise a family. You know, when I interview people, I say, you know, you know, to come to work for us, they said, money's the only thing that drives you, this probably isn't the place to be. Okay, I mean, if that's, if that's really what it is, but you want a pretty decent place to work. And I, and I, you know, the opportunity to do things, raise a family, this is a really good place to be, and so say that with all sincerity, because it has. And I appreciate the opportunities that I've been given, so.
Thank you for all you've done.
Thank you, Paul.
When you be here every day at nine forty-five.
I was gonna stop down this morning, I was down in Vanilla, you know, at the shopping, kind of doing my farewell tour at all the shops. And I bet you, you know, rainy day, but Dave's probably on his way up here, so.
Not stop by afterward, I mean, you can stop by next week. No, thank you, Paul.
Sounds good.
Thanks, guys.
Uh, I, I wanted to bring up a point before we adjourn. Let's mark this one down and maybe put it in the minutes that Kyle, we had our shortest meeting without you here.
It ain't over yet.
You are correct, I just thought I'd get that, get that in for a little crack before we screwed it up.
Okay, we want to citizens input, we have nobody here, anybody on Zoom have anything? Hearing none, entertain a motion to adjourn. Where were we adjourned?
The port.
Ten o'clock. On paper, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, you are adjourned.
So Ty, I need to clarify. About Hawaii.